John and I get the luxury of seeing each other again tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all right.
So that comes with dinner?
Yeah.
And I'm the president of that one and he doesn't have to do all the work.
Can we just flip flop on that one?
Now it's the replay.
And I'm waiting.
I know.
That's sound. The clock says at seven thirty, we're going to go ahead and open up the monthly meeting for the Raleigh County Planning Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Pardon?
I'm talking to Jack. He couldn't wait.
I'd like to welcome everybody this evening to the Raleigh County Planning Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals. First item this evening is I'm going to read the the rules for the public comment session for the meeting tonight. The following applies to all meetings of the Raleigh County Planning Board and Board of Zoning Appeals. Public comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes for each speaker. The time, the time limited does not include questions asked by the board members. The chair reserves the right to extend the speaker's time should the situation be warrant to do so. Number two, all comments should be directed towards the board. Number three, all speakers must go up to the podium to make their comments, state their full names and their address before beginning. Number four, public comment shall be made only during the designated time on the agenda at any time, at any public meeting. The public comments are, public comments are out of order if made outside the designated time on the agenda for the public meeting and without the speaker having first been recognized by the chair. Number five, remarks of, remarks of individual speakers shall not be simply repetitive of identical comments made by the prior speaker. Number six, verbal or visual personal attacks on private citizens, staff, or board members shall not be allowed. Speakers who violate any one or more of these rules will be asked to end their comments and the speaker or non-speaker of the attended, who attended the meeting whose conduct disrupts the orderly and dignified content of the public meeting at any time will be asked by the chair to leave the meeting. Okay. First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make public comment about anything about planning and zoning except for what's on the agenda for this evening. Okay, since I don't have any takers, we'll move on to our second item, which is the consent agenda. At this time, we need to consider the minutes of the June tenth meet, the June tenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Does any of the board members have any corrections or additions or?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve a little bit. Minutes as written.
Now, second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the, uh, the minutes of the June tenth meeting. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Second item underneath the consent agenda is to consider the report of fees for the month of June. Does anybody have any, any of the board members have any questions for Lisa, Bob, on anything?
I was kind of curious about the one that says the fee was doubled for building without a permit.
Yes.
I've never seen that before.
Yes, um, if they receive a violation and they started without a building permit, it's definitely.
We put that in place a number of years ago.
Good plan.
Yep. So. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to consider the fees?
I remember maybe consider the fees for June.
One second.
We moved and seconded that we, uh, consider the report of fees for the month of June. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried, five oh. All right. At this time, under, um, on the third, uh, third item of business this evening is our general agenda, which is the Raleigh County Board of Zoning Appeals. At this time, I'll have Bob give the staff report for the for the Steve Butler petition or two variances. Bob.
Good evening, folks. Uh, Stephen Butler has made application with Raleigh County Planning and Development requesting a variance to reduce the front yard requirement from twenty-five feet to six feet on lots twenty-two and twenty-three of forest slope addition in order to construct a carport on lot twenty-two and a garage on lot twenty-three. And yet another variance to reduce the required separation distance between an accessory structure and a principal structure from ten feet to zero feet in order to connect the house to the garage via an elevated breezeway on lot twenty-three of forest slope addition. The point three six acre subject site consists of lots twenty-two and twenty-three of forest slope addition. It was planted in January of nineteen sixty-three. It generally located approximately five hundred and sixty feet north of Milcove Drive on the east side of Deer Run. As mentioned, the request is actually for two variances needed for the same construction project. A little history on the site, in August of nineteen eighty-one, a building permit was issued by, by planning and development for a garage on lot twenty-two of forest slope addition. Now, Ken has made it clear this wasn't just a garage, but it was more of a boathouse. In August two thousand and two, a building permit was issued for a, in addition to the current structure. However, the details of the permit described in proposed construction as an addition to an accessory structure. In addition, the building permit showed a proposed connection to roll water and proposed onsite alternative subject system, presumably, uh, converting the accessory structure into a residential principal structure. This permit was issued to the previous owner of the, of the site. In July of two thousand and fifteen, a building permit was issued to the applicant for they took or the, for the applicant for the complete remodel of the existing house, uh, which included the elevated deck balcony on the northeast and south sides of the home connecting to a detached garage at a later date. That building permit, by the way, is ongoing. The property was, uh, zoned to A1 single family residential during the nineteen seventy-four zoning conversion process. Uh, the name of the zoning district was changed to SF two single family residential in May of two, two, uh, twenty twelve. Uh, there was, or there are no conditional uses, special uses, or other variances associated with the site. Raleigh County Fire District number one will continue to serve the site. The nearest county fire station is the Tuttle Creek Fire Station, uh, located at forty-one twenty highway thirteen. Unfortunately, this site is located in an area with a forced response type for emergency responders, primarily because there's no fire station within a certain distance, um, as indicated by the red and white dashed lines resulting in a low ISO rating. Uh, the applicant checked with planning, uh, staff as he was concerned that the location of the future garage would be encroaching into the front yard building setback of lot twenty-three. Uh, he also indicated that he would construct in a, a taft single vehicle lean-to on the west elevation of the home in order to keep his truck out of the elements. Uh, fortunately, uh, a recent variance site plan, which you see here, revealed that a portion of the existing house is already in the twenty or don't in the required twenty-five foot set, building setback. As a part of the remodel of the home, the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the front yard requirement from twenty-five feet to six feet. See if I get something going on here. This is the thirty-foot driveway, uh, for deer around the, the east driveway line. And this is the existing twenty-five, uh, foot building setback. Applicant, which is to move that and make it consistent between lot twenty-two and lot three uh, as to at six feet, um, east of the driveway line. And approximately, if you, if you count the edge, actual edge of the roadway, that is a little over twenty feet distance. So it's not six feet from the edge of the road. Okay, so, uh, the second of the two variances is this, uh, it's very simple. Uh, it's being sought is to reduce that required separation distance between an accessory structure and a principal structure uh, from ten feet to zero feet in order to connect the house to the garage via elevated deck or breezeway or balcony, if you want to call it, on, uh, lot twenty-three of forest slope addition. Staff's comment on the building permit issued in twenty fifteen indicated that the permit was being amended as the construction plans involved connecting the home to the garage with a deck, changing the overall length of the house. That was on the building permit in two thousand and fifteen. At the time the permit was issued, it was generally understood that the deck, uh, that a deck built onto the house resulted in an enlarged, that were additions to the principal structure. Thus, the deck portion of the home could straddle a common lot line uh, of lots under the, the same ownership and in effect tie the two lots together to form a development of lots, uh, as here without regard to yard requirements or the need to replat the property. Therefore, the minimum setback between or distance between a garage and a house is measured from the edge of the deck, not the wall of the house. At the time the A permission building permit was issued, separation distance was only five feet. However, when the building permit was issued to remodel the house, which plans included the platform around deck, it was understood by staff and accepted by the department that the general layout of the project involved connecting the two structures together via deck. Disregarding the five-foot separation requirement, sadly, the separation distance required requirement, uh, increased, uh, from five feet to ten feet uh, when the zoning regulations were amended in, uh, September two, uh, twenty fifteen. So the building permit is still active and it's ongoing. The applicant wishes to continue with the project, utilizing elevated decks under a covered breezeway to connect the home with a, with a proposed garage. Second story entrance to the home will line up with the second level entrance to the garage. Uh, the variance is needed to accommodate this style of architecture. It connects the garage to the house without the use of a common wall. Uh, technically, the south wall of the home and the north wall of the garage will still remain over twelve feet separation distance. Um, just a few quick pics of the property. This, uh, slide is, uh, it intended to show the progress of, of this building permit. It's been active since two thousand and fifteen. Most recent. One of the, the other things I can show you here on this space is this is the air conditioner, uh, unit to the home and this is the water heater. These two items cannot be covered up. Aren't closed. And this is the area here where the garage, uh, is, is, uh, projected to go. And you can see in this photo here, the elevation changes of the property and it will dive again over here and then once again over here. So it, uh, it more than drastically, it slopes away and, and tears. Okay, so to go on, let's focus on the first variance. Here, this is the, uh, the, the, the front yard setback. This is to illustrate the proximity of the house or the home and deer run. This is the location of the proposed, uh, single vehicle carport. Uh, note the four concrete pole bases are already in place. Uh, the plan is to, uh, connect like as like a lean-to, uh, roofs going roofline coming from this approximately this location here along this principal structure to poles here. And the roofline will line up with the, the picture of the, the roof of the house. And the overhang from the poles will, will probably be where you see with the shadows. Now it'll be up here, it won't be right down here. Little closer, you can see this is only again for a size large enough for a single vehicle. This is, uh, again, north of the home and looking south along Deer Run. From this finish point, you can see how Deer Run starts to curve around toward the, the southern portion of the lot. So he kind of puts a squeeze play on as far as topography and where that right away of the road is. And so again, you know, the, the, the carport will come over about here. Um, but, uh, again, falls coming up and through the, uh, the connection to the home. Okay, going back to this is again, this is looking at the south end of the home, specifically where the garage is to be located. The property slopes eastward away from Deer Run, requiring terracing and retaining walls to build. At only thirty feet from the west property line, the site experiences a drastic drop in elevation with an extremely steep slope, creating only a narrow buildable area for the home and proposed garage, severely limiting where the structures could actually go. Uh, furthermore, their home is served by an onsite septic and lateral system, uh, further limiting where the structures can be located. The further south you go on the property, the more deer run curves into the area of the property where the road and, and an extreme drop-off narrowing the, the buildable portion of the, the lots even more. This is a good example of the drastic differences here, uh, in topography of the site and the extremely limited buildable area of the property. So this is essentially where the garage would go, uh, but this grid does not show is the even more drastic backdrop along the tree line on the left photo. Another shot of that, here you can kind of see here on your left, uh, the, the difference in elevation where the carport would be and where this, the driveway to the garage would enter off of Deer Run over here, this bush would be removed. Along to your right though, uh, this is the, uh, a more, a more recent picture of the, of the deck that is on the north face of the home and it wraps around to the, uh, the east side or to the rear of the home. And this is essentially what the deck looked like between the house and the garage. Uh, minus, I guess, the, the roofline that will also go over it. This is the, uh, an example, uh, not a perfect example, but a, a close example of uh, the style of garage the applicant is wishing to construct. Only the single window on the second level will be a door, just posed to the door on the home across from the deck. Uh, this pic is showing the west elevation of the home or the building or what would be facing Deer Run. However, the final product will have the bay doors on the south end of the building, not as you see them. And just, uh, uh, again, you know, uh, the applicant wished to show the east portion of the house. This is the rear of the house. You can see, uh, uh, where he is. Uh, this is a, just a few days old as far as a pic. He's been, uh, more diligently trying to get the, uh, the balcony on the, the backside of the house. This area right here, you can see where the slope drops off. This is where septic tank is. And it drops off again, um, past this point. A very steep regaining. So difficult area, but he's, uh, using it and proving it. Uh, after reviewing the criteria set forth in the staff report, staff recommends the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the request for a bit of a variance to reduce the front yard requirement from twenty-five feet to six feet on lots twenty-two and twenty-three of forest slope addition in order to construct a carport on lot twenty-two and a garage on lot twenty-three. Staff also recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the request for a variance to reduce the required separation distance between an accessory structure and a principal structure from ten feet to zero feet in order to connect the house to the garage via an elevated deck breezeway on lot twenty-three or four soap edition. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me before the applicant back to speak?
Eric? Were you? No.
Just point of curiosity, I saw where the septic tank is at. Where did the lab will feel go?
If I could show you here, it's, it's further down, I believe it's further, uh, Steve, uh, that I can't even tell you exactly what's that.
So probably to the north in the septic tank?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jack? I just got one thing. Okay, he said the building permit was ongoing and the building permit was issued in two thousand and fifteen.
That's correct.
Um, that's nine years. I thought we were going to quit doing that in this county because of another instance that we have up north, office twenty-four. I thought that this from my understanding from the office full of the years that you guys were going to get away from that and every time they wanted to build, they had to come and get a building permit instead of having ongoing building permit. I thought we were going to change that.
Uh, there was some discussion about that. It was decided that we're not going to put a cap on the time we of building permit. Right now.
But I thought we were because of the situation up on highway twenty-four.
No. Because you can create more issues, quite frankly. Could you have a situation like this where someone's making progress?
But nine years though, Bob, that's a little, I think that's a little long for a building permit. I mean, this guy up there on the highway has been longer than that and look at the issues you have up there. Nothing's being done.
I, I think that if you can look at the two, the differences between the two, progress is being made on this one. But I, I don't think the cap is going to help.
Okay.
You get somewhere in the middle of a, a project and you say, okay, you, now, now we're going to fine you or penalize you for not hurrying up. Uh, things happen, COVID, that kind of thing, so. It was decided not to proceed.
It was long before COVID started. So, okay, all right. Thank you, Bob. Uh, at this time, would the applicant, would they like to say anything? If so, you need to go to the podium and and state your name and your address and.
Good evening. My name is Steve Butler and I live at six nine two two Deer Run. And I've been a resident of Riley County since I bought this property in oh one. To a point, I worked at CSU in Colorado and, uh, lived on property as I renovated this house. In this room are my neighbors that have come. They were part of me building this property. In part, it was like an old fashioned barn raising when we stood the walls. I paid for this out of my pocket cash. That's why it took nine years, sir. I was wiped out in the oh eight financial debacle in Colorado. And Kansas gave me a new opportunity to rebuild my life. I built a house and a house saved me. That's the difference between me and the gentleman on time of the twenty-four. I would ask of you any questions that you may have to understand what I'm trying to accomplish. When you look at this piece of property and this aerial, you notice in the way upper north or left-hand top portion quadrant is the shadow of the house. There's quite a large piece of property there that I own and it is divided into lots. We're only talking about the top two in this application. Uh, the septic, to answer your question, sir, is located below the house on a level down. It is terrace somewhat like, um, oh, like in Napa Valley where the wineries are terraced. And we have quite a large elevation shift at the back of the property. Uh, as a matter of fact, I would equate it to be approximately nine or ten stories of drop-off from the back to the front. I have a neighbor on the road you see directly beneath the lot that has an easement on the back of my lot for her driveway. And, uh, it is so far down the hill that we never even hardly hear each other. Uh, and during the winter, when the leaves leave the trees, if they only done, you can even see the house. So, uh, I am the first thing that you come to on Deer Run. The picture of the shack with all the trash that Bob showed you in the slideshow is what I bought. And I have converted it into a house that my neighbors here to attest is quite not an eyesore. Uh, I would ask that you do positively on this variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, you guys even a question? I don't know. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, at this time, uh, is there any proponents within one thousand feet that would like to say something? If so, please come up to the podium, the stage, and the, can I address, please?
Good evening. My name is Dennis Egan and I live about a hundred yards north of Stephen Butler. It's seventy nineteen Deer Run Drive. I would encourage you to approve this. Stephen's done incredible work. He's a master builder. He's at a value tournament. The interior of this home far out ranks the exterior, which is elegant. He's done a great job. I would encourage you to grant the variances and let Steve build. He's a master builder. He'll do a great job.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to say a word?
Hello, I'm Consculley. We live across at six nine zero and Deer Run Drive. And we'll guess the property that we live at has been in the family for forty years. So when we used to go drive around that property, it is always a mess, right? Like it's it's not pretty. Um, and then Steve bought it and he completely changed the look of it. You can see that how it used to look. Um, yeah, he has done an incredible job. He has an eye for architecture and he cleans up after himself and he's done it all himself and that's an amazing job and we would encourage you to approve it also.
Thank you. Is there any other? Any other? Any other proponents that would like to say something?
My name is Robert Oldrick and I live directly across the street from him at seven thousand three deer run. Well, we moved here from Denver in August of twenty-one. Been kind of watching what he's been working on lately. And I've talked to him about a lot of the stuff as far as um, how his property is set up, where the road is and different things like that. And um, you know, to hear some of the stuff you'd say, well, he's trying to build right on the road or whatever. But if you really look at it's, it's really far off the road. The way they cut the road out is actually uh, different than, than what you might think as far as what's been talked about. Um, my wife and I are in agreement that what he's doing is, is really nice and it's good quality stuff and um, we don't have any problem with it at all. We'd like to see you approve it as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that within a thousand feet proponent would like to say something?
My name is Jill Greve. My husband Ron and my two boys live just a little bit north of Steve at seven zero one one deer run. I just want to echo what all the other neighbors have said. Uh, we've probably lived on Deer Run longer than any of the other neighbors that are here. Uh, we moved out there in ninety-seven. And so we were there a decade before Stephen even moved in and we see neighbors come and go. And I just can't say enough about what a good neighbor he is. And you cannot compare his project to what I think you're talking about on Highway twenty-four. He has been continually making improvements and working on it every year, nonstop. It's just he's one man. I mean, there was a time where he needed help hanging a window. And I was down there helping him lift the window up because he didn't have anybody else. So it's not that he's letting the project fly or that he's lazy. He's just one guy. So I, we also would encourage you to approve his request.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like a proponent within a thousand feet? All right, uh, we gotta go down through the list here. Um, is there any opponents within a thousand feet? All right. So none of the, no opponents. So, um, does the board have any questions? Or not? Okay. So at this time, uh, if you don't have any, um, other questions, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing so we can go into our deliberation mode? The movement is second that we close the public hearing and go into our deliberation mode. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those pose. Motion carried five oh. Eric, we'll start with you.
No problem, wasn't it?
Okay, Rita?
No, I think it's a challenging property and I think what's going to be done is, is worth having a variance on.
Joe? Yeah, when I first read Margaret Porter, I saw this setback from ten feet to zero feet. And that raised a question in my mind. We had one, it's been two or three years ago. Somebody wanted to zero. Yeah. And we said, whoa. So that made me read this very, very closely as to what was going on. From what I've seen here and Margaret Porter and from the applicant and the neighbors. This seems like a great thing to do.
Jack, anything?
Well, I think it looks like a great idea too.
Okay. Just for the record, I wasn't trying to compare this property to the property on Highway twenty-four. I was just making the fact that at one point in time that um, it was brought to, I've been on this board for quite a few years and that they were going to change the time limit on the building permits, but I guess that was changed. Uh, we've done a ton of these variances since the time I've sat on this board. And each one of them is a little bit different, but this one isn't out of the ordinary. So, uh, at this time, uh, so we'll need to have two motions here. Yep. Well, so we need to have two motions of approval. Uh, so do I have a, um, I Yep, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for variance petition number twenty-four dash oh two seven to reduce the front yard requirement from twenty-five feet to six feet on lots twenty-two and twenty-three of the four slope addition in order to construct a carport, carport on lot twenty-two and a garage on lot twenty-three.
And now a second?
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the request for a, for a variance petition twenty-four dash zero twenty-seven to reduce the front back requirement from twenty-five feet to six feet on lots twenty-two and twenty-three of four slope addition in order to construct a carport on lot twenty-two and a garage on twenty-three. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion is carried five zero. Okay. Uh, now we'll need to have a second motion on the second petition.
I'll move that say if we approve the request for variance petition number twenty-four dash oh twenty-eight, reduce required separation distance between accessory structure and a principal structure from ten feet to zero feet in order to connect the house to the garage via an elevated deck breezeway on lot twenty-three of four slope additions.
Well, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for a variance petition twenty-four dash zero twenty-eight to reduce requirement and separation distance between an accessory structure and the principal structure from z- ten feet to zero feet in order to conduct the house or to connect the house and the garage via an elevated deck breezeway on lots twenty-three of four slope addition. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five oh. Good luck. Keep up the good work. It looks nice. All right. So we got some things here to sign. Um, you're all all, uh, you guys are all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you don't, uh, you're welcome. You're free to leave. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, this time, uh, do I have a motion to close, uh, the Raleigh County Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene as Raleigh County Planning
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the meeting of the Raleigh County Zoning and Appeals and reconvene as Raleigh County Planning Board. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carried five oh. Uh, first item of business on the Raleigh County Planning Board is to hear the hearing for the request of the Raleigh County Rule Water District Number One. Bob?
Okay, so yeah, good evening, folks. At Raleigh County Rural Water District Number One, this is made up of a petition with Raleigh County Planning and Development is taking approval for a special use authorization to allow for the construction, operation and maintenance of a three hundred thousand gallon rural water district water tower. Uh, the subject site is generally located approximately eighteen hundred and sixty feet west of the intersection of Tunnel Creek Boulevard and Thomas Square Road on the south side of top of our Tunnel Creek Boulevard. Well, closer here, Rural Water District Number One, uh, has two towers. This service is customers, a north tower located at Tunnel Creek, uh, Shooting Park on Tunnel Creek Boulevard and a south tower located along Wildcat Creek Road, west of Saddle Rock Road. According to officials of the district, capacity has been dwindling over the, uh, the past decade. It's well below what is recommended by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Uh, they were unsuccessful on locating an appropriate site, which would allow the district to use existing lines. Um, would allow the district to use existing lines, uh, along a certain corridor. Uh, discussions were had with, uh, the county engineer and the Board of County Commissioners regarding locating the new tower on the parks and emergency management maintenance facility site. The Board of County Commissioners agreed to grant an easement and enter into a long-term agreement with Rural Water District Number One for the new tower, uh, following the approval of a special use authorization. Uh, the new tower will be used in conjunction with the existing north tower, which is the one in Tunnel Creek Shooting Park. While the south tower along Wildcat Creek Road will be replaced in place. The overall goal is to double capacity for existing and future customers of the district. Uh, the subject property has been zoned agricultural since nineteen fifty-eight. It has experienced several modifications to the zoning designation over the years. In June of two thousand and six, a special use authorization was approved for the, uh, Riley County Parks and Emergency Management Maintenance Facility. And in January two thousand and ten, the subject property was included with other nearby tracts of land for an approved special use authorization to allow seven non-commercial wind turbines. Uh, you see pretty much every, every day you pass water. Uh, later that year in September, a variance was approved to allow the increase of the maximum height for a wind turbine from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and sixty feet. That's the history of that one site. Raleigh County Fire District Number One will serve the site, the nearest, uh, county fire station. This is the Tunnel Creek Fire Station located at forty-one twenty highway thirteen. The subject site is located within five road miles of a fire station. Uh, this is a map of the county shops complex, uh, provided by Google Earth showing the proposed location of the tower in relation to the rest of the buildings on the site. As a point of, uh, reference, uh, this shows the intersection of Marla Avenue and Tunnel Creek. And this is, uh, uh, Raleigh County Public Works, uh, building here and Raleigh County Fleet Services here. And as you go further west, this is, uh, Raleigh County House, Household Hazardous Waste. It's a easy one to say. And this is the Raleigh County Parks Department here. This is the projected site here. And a little thing, uh, don't try to read all the, the small print, but I did, this kind of wanted to, uh, show you what that looked like, a little bit larger with the previous picture. But you can kind of see where the tower will be associated, uh, kind of associated with the site here in the center of the square. It's a hundred and fifty foot, a hundred and fifty foot square. And this right here, this is a little parking area coming down off of the, uh, accessway to the site. Um, the important thing here is also that its ability to connect into the, uh, I believe that's what an eight inch main here, uh, is, is, is the proximity is, uh, most important there for that purpose. Again, close up of this, the, the site plan. So this is what it looks like. This is a close up view of the hundred and fifty foot by a hundred and fifty foot area where the tower will be located. There will be an all weather surface parking area, as mentioned, located off the existing entrance to the parent track. This, uh, plan shows how the location of the tower is most efficient as it will have the ability to tap into that existing water main I mentioned just on the south right away of Tunnel Creek Boulevard. Uh, both Evergy and Sunflower Electric were contacted regarding the tower's proximity, uh, to their lines. Uh, although the, the tower would be located a hundred feet away or so, uh, it would not be located in that right away or in their easement. It did not express any concerns. Um, and this is a little bit more specific. So you can kind of see, uh, whether the, the style of the water tower here and what it would look like. This is kind of from the, the top. Logos here, uh, this will, this logo here will face east and west. This will face north. Um, this also shows the, the obstruction lighting diagram here that most of these types of water towers will have. Uh, and another point of reference here, uh, they are going to be allowing them, uh, two hookups, uh, two fire hydrants on site as part of this tower. So, uh, the request was reviewed with the two thousand and nine Vision twenty twenty-five Raleigh County Comprehensive Plan specifically the develop, the development guidance system in chapter twelve. First element of the TGS is performance to the goals, objectives and policies of the plan. Chapter ten of the plan addresses the need for public facilities and services that are necessary to serve the citizens of Raleigh County. And it states, and I want to read this now because it's not the only utility that is deemed, uh, you know, uh, it's special. But the question will be, the future growth and development of Raleigh or of rural Raleigh County will depend largely on the extent of public services and facilities available to accommodate such growth. Availability of water, waste of water, fire protection and emergency management services, police protection, schools, parks and other utilities and services affects the safety and quality of life for residents and the economic stability of the county. The, uh, overall goal of that chapter is to ensure the efficient provision and utilization of public facilities and services with objective of appropriately locate public facilities in the rural area. So, uh, the second element in the future land use, um, or the, uh, uh, the developing guidance system here is that according to the future land use map uh, found in the plan, the subject property is not located within a designated growth area. That really doesn't necessarily apply to these types of things. I just want to make sure you knew that. And due to the nature of the request, the Lisa was not generated. Number four, the applicant did not express unnecessary hardship. If the request were to be denied on the application, but clearly, uh, there I believe there would be considerable hardship uh, to the citizens of Raleigh County in the district. The request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the plan. And here's a few pics of the site. Uh, first, this is an aerial view from Google Earth of the county shops in relation to the proposed tower location. And this is what will be. This area right here is quite frankly, uh, raised. So when you're driving by, you, you don't, you can't just look over and see this building back here. It's a, it's a lot more difficult to do than right over here. But this is, uh, uh, Raleigh County Publics, Public Works here, household hazardous waste here. And here's the parks and, uh, emergency management maintenance facilities. Here, this is where the, uh, tower, a tower will go. And standing inside, uh, the, uh, the site and looking directly at that building, this is the fenced in area, it has grassy area here. That's the location. I just simply kind of, uh, turned, uh, to my left. I'm, I'm basic east now. Just kept kind of going there and kind of see here. And you can also see the, the raise and elevation of the site itself. Uh, and I just kept going over. So you can see the entrance of the site, like Tunnel Creek Boulevard. Uh, staff recommends the following conditions be added to the authorization. Uh, these are not too burdensome. But I feel that they are, they're deserving, uh, to be in the authorization. The entrance and access road to the substation will be a substation. In this case, this will be water tower, shall consist and be maintained with all weather surfacing. Uh, no portion of the site shall be used for storage of equipment, vehicles, uh, materials or supplies, et cetera, during construction. All, uh, outdoor light fixtures shall be shielded with cutoff fixtures and directed in a way to prevent off-site glare. I believe the, uh, the, the tower is going to be, uh, updated, correct?
Um, other, no, I guess the red structure.
Just, just red. Okay. So that, that works then. Okay. So uh, staff recommends that the planning board forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners of Raleigh County for a special use authorization to allow the construction, operation and maintenance of a three hundred thousand gallon rural water district water tower based on the following findings. The proposed water tower will, will enhance the overall reliability of the system by increasing water storage and decreasing service interruptions during peak period or periods of peak usage and emergencies. That proposed water tower will not pollute the air, land or Uh, proposed water tower will not pollute the air, land or water or produce dust, fumes, odors, smoke or vibration or flashing lights or anything on that list. The uh request is in accordance with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And it has been determined that the request meets the requirements of the Raleigh County Land Development Regulations and the Raleigh County Sanitary Code. If there is any questions for me that would conclude my presentation on this. Yeah, is uh in attendance and a representative?
Does any of the board members have anything to Bob?
Nope.
All right, at this time, um, would the applicant like to come up and say a few words if you want? If you don't, that's fine too. But uh.
Good evening. My name is Jared Brooks. I'm an engineer with Schwab Eaton. Located at 5410 Ledge Stone Drive here in Manhattan. And I've been assisting uh Raleigh County Rural Water District Number One. Several of the board members um are here this evening with this project. And um, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, thanks to Bob. He did a, a wonderful job presenting our project. Um, as, as he mentioned, um, the district has an existing 200,000 gallon tank that serves this portion of their district, which spans 85 square miles from Manhattan all the way to Randolph. Um, I believe as of two or three years ago, there were 860 benefit units. I think that's probably going up. Um, considerably more. So this is a, a very important project um for, you know, the, the rural citizens of, of Raleigh County. And since this, this original tower was built in 1985. You know, the district's incurred over 40 years of, of growth in Raleigh County. So as you can imagine, you've got to um improve your facilities uh over 40 years' time to, to handle growth and additional growth. And this project will do just that.
Hey, the board of members have anything for you?
Nope.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, is there any other opponents? Pro, proponents, sorry, proponents, I guess within 1,000 feet, I guess none of the, none of the county guys are here to ask any questions. So, all right, uh. At this time, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and go into our deliberation mode?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we close our public hearing and go into our deliberation mode. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those posed, motion carried five oh. Eric?
The only thing I would say is that if we uh move to approve it, that we include the restrictions with the all-weather uh access road and the non-storage of equipment on the, on the site as the staff recommended. That would be the only thing.
Okay, so we can just put, okay.
Yeah.
Rita, you have anything?
No.
Joe?
I have no problems with this.
Jack? All right, I don't either. So. So, all right, uh. At this time, do I have a motion to uh recommend approval to the board? Approval to the board of the Raleigh Commissioners of Raleigh County for special use authorization for the construction of a 300,000 gallon rural water district tower.
So moved. With the, with the addition of the constraints outlined by the, the staff.
Okay. Well, second. It's been moved and seconded um to recommend, um, let's see here, approval to the Board of Raleigh County Commissioners for a special use um to construct, to construct the 300,000 gallon rural water district tower with um notes sta- stated by the notes stated by the staff and the recommendations. All those or any other discussion? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried five oh.
Okay, with that, thank you. And I need to make the announcement, the Board of County Commissioners. What's your request on July 25th at 9:50 a.m. in these chambers? That is all. Thank you.
All right, good luck. So it's been kind of interesting to know that the Randolph Water Tower does not have to, that's a natural flow to that thing. That's, I never. Yeah. So, all right, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I do not see any other.
Mr. Chairman, I move with you.
Well, second. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourned the Raleigh County Planning Board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those posed, motion carried five zero. Thank you. You all right?
No, but we don't need to mess around. Just like at the fire. It's right. Let's not waste time if we have.